County Commissioner, it covers, you might have to elaborate, covers Venice, a little bit of Inglewood or all Inglewood?
It's really no Inglewood, it's kind of gerrymandered, it cuts off half the South Venice, gerrymanders down into the Wellen Park area in Northport, kind of opens up down in Northport area, so it's really kind of a hard district to read. But predominantly the Venice, Wellen Park, Northport area, Wellen Park area of Northport, and then down into an area down south of, in the Toledo Blade area.
You gotta be careful referring to Wellen Park as Northport.
Yeah, I'm staying out of that one, I can tell you that, that's a hot topic, so yeah, that's emotional.
Now, what we're gonna do, this is just a long form, give the note, Tom, for a lot of the voters out there. I'm gonna let him tell us a little bit about his background, then we'll go into questions, I'm gonna be over here trying to share it on other media, so go ahead, Tom.
Well, I'm Tom Knight, and I'm 51-year resident of Sarasota County, and my family brought us down here from Western Pennsylvania to get a better life in an area that was struggling in 1973, 70 years before the interstate opened, so grew up in South Venice. House had no air conditioning back in that era, we just kind of survived, jealousy windows, my wife of 35 years, Tracy, her family grew up in Jackaranda, and just grew up here in the Venice area, had a great time, played baseball and football and Little League baseball here, and back in that era, the kids from Northport didn't have a school or have much, wasn't much there, they came up to Venice, the kids from Inglewood came up to Venice, so we all knew each other. It was really truly South County back then, so grew up here, went to all the local schools, Venice Elementary, Venice Junior High, Venice High. Got my associate's degree at Manatee Junior College, which back then was at the Brickyard Shopping Center while they were building the South County.
Remember the Brickyard?
Yeah, remember that? But it made it affordable for people who didn't have the ability to go off to universities. And laid block for my father, mowed lawns, delivered furniture for Fox Furniture down in South Venice. Pretty much anything to make a buck and to pay my way through college, and ended up going to Florida State University, got my degree in criminology, left there, and later in my educational time, I got my degree in certified public management from East of South Florida while I was with the Highway Patrol, so I started my career in law enforcement with the Service of the Police in 1987. Wanted to get with a bigger agency, so I went with the Florida Highway Patrol in 1988, and went to the academy and was honored to be selected as class president. And I thought that that would get me home here to the Venice Sarasota County area, and they shipped me down to Fort Lauderdale, Miami. So I was a state trooper down to Fort Lauderdale, Broward County area, and every time I promoted from that time, I got promoted to sergeant, we went to Marianna, Florida, lieutenant, I was back here in the Venice area briefly, then down to Miami, spent some more time down in Miami, Fort Lauderdale area, made captain to Tallahassee, Florida, and then my final jump was major, my, over the Tampa Bay region, had about 300 employees in seven counties oversaw. And, but being here from the Sarasota County area in the Venice area where I grew up, everybody wants to be home and be in this beautiful area, and I took a risk and left my career with the Highway Patrol after 20 years, five years before my retirement, and ran for sheriff. And we won in a three-way race, and had a wonderful 12-year career. It did make me lose some hair, as you can tell now, but it was a great career, I think this community, we drove crime down 53%, we dealt with the opioids. We did have things that we had to get through and get community support to get through, and so that's a tough job. But left office, retired, and was having a good time with my wife and children, playing a lot of pickleball, when my wife and I decided that it's time for me to go back and see if I can bring representative government back to the community again.
Alright, hey Tracy, if you're hearing, listening, I need some wifi on my phone, my cellular is weak here. But I want to share it in my group, so once I get a password, I'll share it in the group, hopefully people are on the page watching it. So let's start with some questions, one thing, I get a lot of these flyers, I live in Venice, and it's your competitor, and so you know, they're both Republicans. Is it a nonpartisan?
It's a, it's a, no, it's a partisan.
It is partisan, so they're both Republicans, and they're running against, his opponent is Neil Rainford. And he keeps putting out that, that he was chosen by Ron DeSantis, and I'm in, I do, I know a lot of the Republicans, I know a lot of the inside stories, and I've heard a couple of different versions, but he was basically, you know, you got DeSantis up in Tallahassee, and he's being told by Brill, Pat Neal, and some of the other people who to choose, who they want in that position, and that influence weighs on him, and he makes a decision. The other one was, well, who supported Trump, who didn't support him, because at the time when Rainford was put into that position, it was, it was when DeSantis was still in the race, and my biggest issue that I posted about is, he didn't live here, he lived in North Sarasota County.
District one.
Yeah, and it kind of irritated the hell out of me, as a Republican and as a citizen here, that he ignored our home rules, which is, you gotta live in the area that you're gonna represent, you live here on the island. What are your thoughts about that, because he pushes that a lot, the DeSantis guy, what are your thoughts on it?
Well, our charter does require that you live in the district, and the young man that I'm running against is, does actually, his primary residence is in District One. So one would think that if you get the appointment, that you would use that to run in a district where you married into a family business, and, but that obviously is not the case of this. Why I didn't get the appointment, I don't know, there's a lot of speculation, but everybody has to remember is, the governor makes hundreds, I'm sure, hundreds of appointments every year. I was appointed by Governor Scott to his Law and Order Transition Team, I was also appointed to different boards by Ashley Moody for opioid task force. My wife herself was on the Board of Trustees for State College of Florida, appointed by Governor DeSantis and Governor Scott. So I would think that if, you know, the governor, the political influence of what the local politics is, is that the governor maybe got reached by that. So I really don't know, and I don't speculate to the governor's thought process. Probably if he were here, knowing that he appointed my wife to the Board of Trustees, he probably already knows who she is. And so it really doesn't matter to me, things happen for a reason, for political reasons. What matters to me is, when I was sheriff, I always lived by this, is that you control what you can control, and there's nothing in the rearview mirror, that the windshield's bigger than the rearview mirror, and that I can control what I want to control. And knowing that the appointment didn't happen for me to represent a community that I've been 51 years, was really my decision then, is that do I want to go ahead and run a campaign and see if the citizens want to vote for somebody who's been here and has worked through government? Or are they happy with a political appointment that happened, and that will be decided on August 20th.
And I can see your comments on the sides, guys, I will look at them to see if there's any questions. And one more thing I want to knock on, then we'll hit some questions, is these flyers. Now, I see we got a PAC here, sponsored by Cop PC up in Tampa. I can tell you guys, if you guys know, when I ran for mayor, they spent about 50,000, Neil money, went to a PAC to push my opponent. And they use these PACs, now, the Republicans, when a Republican runs against a Republican, we're supposed to be nice, you're not supposed to attack. But these are attack ads, and I see, I don't know if you guys can see the picture, and I think Tom posted something about it, where they're taking photos of you and they're altering them. Do you want any thoughts on the PACs involvement? And do you think Neil has any say on it, can Neil come out against it, what would you like to see happen?
Well, one, a couple of opportunities I had to debate, he has said that he is aware of it, and that he stands by them, and that, you know, you can look for anything there, they're all accurate allegedly, and, you know, they pick and choose them, but that's the politics nowadays, is, you know, the PAC is by the consultant, but it's approved. And, you know, it's interesting, I mentioned it in a debate the other day, is that my opponent has been endorsed by the Gulf Coast Barrows Exchange and the Builders Industry Association, and the CEO of the Gulf Coast Barrows Exchange wrote an op-ed before they did, before they selected who they wanted to appoint, or excuse me, endorse, and they said that they don't agree with negative campaigning and all those things going on, so it's kind of interesting that they endorsed the guy who was attacking me before they did the endorsement. But, you know, when you're a big business, you're big companies, and you need their votes on development, you need your votes on building, you need your votes, political votes, and you don't want to build the infrastructure and do the things, is that you're gonna approve that. So I don't worry about the attack ads, you know, I was a cop, I was in a lot of different situations, my training officer was killing the line of duty, and I'm kind of like an armadillo. It just kind of bounces off of me, we stay our strategy, we stay our course, and people will eventually see through it. So is it immature? Yeah. Is it something that you would, you know, the Republican Party locally always says, you know, when this is done, we're gonna unify the party. Well, that's hard to unify the party when you act immature, the way the immature things that go on in these campaigns. But the reality of the fact is, these campaigns are run this way locally purely because the Republicans who sit on that county commission, and the Republican who is selected here is certainly pro-development, and doesn't want representative government. That's just really what it boils down to, so, and I'm not anti-development, I'm not anti-construction, I laid block for my father. 10% of our workforce in this county relies on the construction industry. But, you know, when you talk about the attack ads, they're really kind of a way, because when you're beating somebody, and that big money is there, and they're doing polling, we kind of like it, because it tells us there's fear from that side, and that they're also know, this is the end is coming in this district. Is that they can attack, 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 to try to bring my poll ratings down, and to smear me up. But there's nothing in the attack ads about what's going on here locally, it's all about decisions I made as sheriff, they want to skew it. So we stay our course, we stay our strategy. You know, maybe when I win this thing, and we get through this, maybe I'll be the influence of change in local Republican politics, and we bring representative government and good politics back to our community, and not the dirty politics that people are getting in their mailbox. And now they're seeing, from what I understand, they're seeing it on the news now too, so a lot of money, just so everybody out there knows. That doesn't happen without a ton, a ton of money, and so, you know, I don't have that big a money, and all that money through the PACs are developer money. And so, you know, I'm not gonna say names of local developers, but they got 13 PACs, it can all be traced back, but at the end of the day, I don't put the name on it and give them credibility for doing it, and I won't put the name on the consultant doing it, because I'm not running against them, I'm running against Neil Rainford. And when I win, and we win with this campaign, and we restore representative government back to this community, and then hopefully we can run clean campaigns and do what's right for the area, that's the only real reason I'm running.
Now, I have a question, something I hear, I was actually talking to a reporter that's written an article, I believe, and just prior to this call, or this visit, and they mentioned America First, and you get support by them. In my view, it's funny, because you hear Neil's campaign saying, oh, Tom's a Democrat, and if you get support of America First, you're not a Democrat. You know, I know the organization, James is the president, I like a lot of the people there, I share a lot of their values and beliefs. So do you want to, they did that to me too, they said Frank was a Democrat, and do you want to elaborate on that? Because this is, why I'm asking them to do this, folks, is, it's a Republican primary, so Republicans can only vote in it. This is August 20th, the primary, then after that, they go to the general election, and it's gonna be Tom, and so far, an independent, and I just heard there's a write-in, I'll ask you about that in a minute. So basically, the primary, whoever wins this Republican primary, probably will end up being the county commissioner, alright? So the Republicans are gonna choose it, and that's where it comes in handy, because I've sat at that Republican booth during the elections, people walk up, they say, who's the Republican, I'm going that way, they don't do the research, and that booth, whoa, that's a whole other story. But go ahead, are you really a Democrat like Rainford is saying?
Listen, we're gonna find out later in this campaign that I am the only true lifelong Republican, because Mr. Rainford was not a Republican, he couldn't even vote for Trump back the first time, so we'll talk about that at some other point in time. But it's interesting about this Frankie is, I was a 2017 Republican Party Elected Official of the Year. And so, you know, I was good for them then when I was a sheriff, but I don't fit the mold now, because I don't do what I'm told to do all the time. And being told what to do by the local Republican Party is, is that you're gonna accept developer money, you're gonna accept and vote the way that they want you to vote, and you're gonna fit in, and what I told them, no, I'm not gonna fit in, and I'll see you at the finish line, and that's where we're at with this right now. So I am endorsed by America First, and I'm proud to have that endorsement. And the reason that America First, that I believe from hearing it is, is they broke off, was they didn't like the money being filtered through the Republican Executive Committee by developers to support Republican candidates who vote the way they're told to vote, they're puppets on the board. They come up the Planning Commission, if they behave themselves on the Planning Commission, then they get all the money and support that they need to run for county commission, and they load those up, they load your campaign finance reports up with developer money plus, and they also have the PAC, like you talked about, the dirty money that's being used, so that's just the way it is. And I think that the citizens are tired of it now, I don't think the citizens really care about a whole lot of things right now, except for sitting in traffic and developers controlling our community like they do in Manatee County. And I think that this race that I'm in right now is so important to this county, that, you know, if the potential for me to lose, that we would just turn our keys to this county over to the developers that control Manatee County now, and when I win, we bring the government back. So am I proud to have the Republican Assembly and America First to endorse me? Absolutely, they know who a real Republican is. And so they're gonna try to make me, my opponents could try and make me a liberal Democrat, you know, they don't want to talk about issues, they want to talk about emotion.
Alright, let me ask you, everyone's always saying, Republican, they're all about development, I'm a Republican, I'm known not to be about development, you're presenting that you're not. So I was told by somebody, and I'm not gonna name their name, they said that if Neil wins, basically, it's a referendum for developers to go crazy. Especially, and his reference was Siesta Key, and building there, and they said if Tom wins, it'll put a block there. You still got some people on that county commission that are for it. So what are your thoughts on Siesta Key? In addition to that, I just posted about the Venice Avenue River Road corner, where Benderson is gonna build that out. My understanding was, a couple of years ago, I might be off, they changed the zoning on that to accommodate another developer that couldn't deal, and then went to Benderson. So both developments.
I think, I think the biggest thing here is, is that I am not anti-development, I am not anti-growth. I am, what the citizens want is adherence to the comprehensive plan and the density rules that came within that comprehensive plan. And what the citizens want in 2002 was, was later designed as the 2050 Plan for Sarasota County, which was nationally acclaimed. If we would have stayed on the 2050 Plan, we wouldn't be having any conversations right now about development, zoning, density, and rules, and all that. This is what the community wanted, and they put together, but when you're able to get the county commissioners term limited, and then you bring in your own people, all these plans get ignored, and I think what people really upset about is the fact that there are overlay districts, there are plans that were made, and that they might just as well throw them in the McAfee River and let them float away, because all it does is create a whole lot of strife in our community, that every time the commissioners vote, they vote for increased density, exceptions to the plan, violations, they're violating the 2050 Plan every time they vote, from the Planning Commission to the County Commission. And I think that the citizens, I'm not anti-development, but I think that when you violate, so I'm a cop, remember, when you speed, you go beyond the speed limit, you get a ticket. And, you know, that's why the citizens have a say. So out on Siesta Key, there's an overlay district, the citizens out there have said over and over since the 80s, is that they don't want huge hotels on Siesta Key. I don't live on Siesta Key, but I grew up tubing through Midnight Pass and all that, so it's still a part of the county I grew up in. And at the end of the day, I'm not the one who decides if they build a hotel or not, the citizens decide. And the citizens decided way before that the developer bought the property, that it wasn't something that they wanted out there. So I don't understand why the people with the power continue to push on the citizens. And like a friend of mine told me, this race is the many versus the money. So I've raised a lot of money in Siesta Key, we had two large fundraisers out there, and really, I just told them is that I'm a rules person. If anything gets changed out there, and the rules get changed, that the citizens should have a say on that change. They removed local government out there, that's why they wanted to create their own government, because they weren't being heard anymore, they'd been abandoned by the county commissioners. And so that's one, and then, you know, it's the same thing with the rezoning out here, as you move towards a River Road and get out towards the McAfee River, the numerous acreages have been rezoned, and people talk about private property rights, I mean, but that was also something that the 2050 Plan, that you go beyond urban service boundaries, there were certain rules for that, and that's what the citizens wanted. And what happens with those things is, who's gonna pay for the infrastructure, who's gonna widen the roads, who's gonna do all that? We're sitting in traffic now, and what they're gonna end up doing is, they're gonna use your surtax money, which they've already started doing with roads coming out of Sarasota east of the interstate, they're gonna start using surtax money, which is actually designed to improve roads and improve infrastructure, to build roads and build wider roads, instead of the developers being required to do fiscally neutral planning. That's in our charter, and they violate the charter every time with fiscal.
You know, that would be nice, if they, if the county commissioners, the city council members would hold these developers to the infrastructure and planning that out. Nobody's doing that.
No, and you know, down in Wellen Park, they have CDD, so the people in Wellen Park are paying that back, so they did do the infrastructure before they built Wellen Park, which is, it's beautiful in Wellen Park, but they get CDD, so that's decided. But when you come here, and you're talking about east of the interstate on Clark Road, and you're talking about Edmondson Road and Jackaranda Boulevard, I don't know where all those cars are gonna go, from the traffic circle to Center Road, and that there's not, there's no turn lanes being put in, they're putting a red light in, so people get in and out of the development they're building, but when you wipe it all out, and you live in Chestnut Creek, and you're not involved in the process, or you go to talk to the county commissioners and the planning commission, and you're ignored? That's not representative government, and so to not make the developers go back out into the public areas and communicate those things like they used to do, they're just slowly, slowly, slowly taking government away from the people.
So would you be somebody on the commission, if, let's say, if Pat Neal comes before you and says, well, I paid this traffic expert to review the traffic patterns, and they're fine. I've seen before, even Ms. Dieter, who's passed away now, she would sit there and accept that.
Right.
Are you gonna challenge that, are you gonna say, we need an independent study, because I've driven that, and I think there will be an impact, or?
Well, one thing is for certain, is I was a state trooper, so I know about traffic, you know, I worked in the Miami, Fort Lauderdale area, so I understand traffic and mitigation of traffic with highway safety motor vehicles. So would I review it and take it into consideration? Absolutely. But I've been here so doggone long, that I know it is real and what's prepared. And so you can hire a consultant to prepare anything you want to have prepared to meet your personal needs. Do I think that if I was skeptical of it, say, you know, Jackaranda Boulevard, through Jackaranda, maybe from US 41, as you cut through Jackaranda, and you cut through Center Road, would I take that plan from what the developers handing to me? Probably not, I'd probably ask them the staff, the county staff, to review it and let me know what their thoughts on it. I wouldn't take anything at equal value without vetting it, I mean, as sheriff, people come to me with great ideas, and I would initially say, wow, that's cool. But then we would sit down and go, whoa, you know, this isn't legal here, that isn't right there, and we'd pick it apart a little bit. So would I take everything at face value? No. Would I take everything into consideration from developers? Yeah. Because, you know, we are still gonna grow, people want to live here, but we're gonna, we need to grow the right way, we need to grow the way the citizens want it. So if they came to me like about Jackaranda Boulevard, and they had that plan you're alleging to, similar philosophically, Frankie, probably no, I'd be very skeptical of that, going, you know, I don't know, you're putting a lot of apartments up, and a lot of small, where all those cars gonna go? Because the traffic circle stacked up in February as it is, and they're trying to get out to the interstate, where are those cars gonna go?
Well, and I remember that, they were doing all this build out there, in addition to, they were planning on approving a zoning change for the hospital back when they were gonna build there, and they said it wasn't gonna impact traffic, and I'm sitting there scratching my head as I was listening to the commission meeting, thinking, are you guys really not gonna question this?
Yeah, well, you know, that's the funny thing, they're not gonna question it because they're told what to do. And so, you know, they're not told what to do, they vote the way they're told to vote, and they're told to say what they're told to say by the people who fund their campaigns. And so at the end of the day, it's common sense, listen, you don't have to be a county commissioner to have common sense. And people aren't dumb, people have common sense. If you live out in Venice Palms, or you live in the condos off Jackaranda, and you're sitting there going, wow, this is a great plan, what a great traffic study. It's all a bunch of BS, and everybody knows it, that's why people are frustrated, and that's why I'm getting so much support in this campaign, just to bring some reasonableness back to our community.
Alright, I have a question, this is a Herald article that came out on the 14th by Curie Seidman with the Herald, and it says, the title is, oops, they did it again, county commissioners play favorites in providing funds. And we all know about this, they took away early learning funding, and what happened is, according to this article, and granted, she's not a reporter, she's allowed to interject her opinion in it, but she basically said, Mike Moran didn't like the formula that was agreed upon, he altered it at the last minute, and many people lost funding based upon that alteration. What would you do in this type of situation? And I was surprised reading this thing, it seemed like nobody challenged it on the council, the other four county commissioners just sat there and said, okay, Mike, let's go with your new calculation and change the funding around, what are your thoughts on it?
Well, a couple of things is the larger issue here, the biggest issue here is, when you remove money from nonprofits that you already had in your budget, it tells you a couple of things, one, you didn't know how to prepare a budget, when you approved a budget last fiscal year, so you're scraping the money back now, because for some emotional or political issue, you want to be able to say you're conservative. The budget went up 38% last year, and they really don't understand how to build a budget, prepare a budget. So they put all these things in the budget, and then they catch a little grief while they run a political campaign for people like Tom Knight, and say, well, you know, your budget went up 13%, and people are struggling, and, you know, where's the money? What have you got for that 38% increase, 38% it went up, what do we as citizens get for that increase? So now they're trying to scrape the money back, and they just find talking points to say why they're scraping, so the talking points aren't authentic, authentic. So they're trying to scrape the money back, and it's upsetting nonprofits. So that's the main thing, when you take away from early children's centers, that upsets people, early children's centers, that upsets people. But the most important thing is, there's a professional way to govern, and if you're going to tell them that you're not going to, that you're gonna take the money back, it's good to give them a couple of months to say, we need you to find an alternative source of funding, because we don't believe we want to fund that program anymore. And don't just take the money back and leave them shocked and aw. When you take 500, you have $500,000 that you take back, and they have a matching grant for $500,000, that's a million dollars that impacts an organization. Whether you as a citizen agree with the organization or not, is really kind of irrelevant. It is, somebody likes that organization, that organization is needed to some capacity by somebody, and when you do shock and awe as an elected official, and leave them in a position that they can't even function because of the money you're taking is also part of a matching grant, that you told them you could have, and then you scrape it back for your own political needs, that's just a poor way to govern, that's not the way private business works. And so it's just, it's not good, and there's a net-net to this, houses going to impact, one of them there is Harvest House. And so they told Harvest House to take the money back, when I was sheriff, I was partnered with Harvest House, you know why? We needed somewhere to take homeless people, so that we weren't being called for service all the time, that the deputies had a resource to take homeless people to. So we get called all the time, we were getting called all the time about homeless people, but the deputies would get there, what do you do? There's nowhere to go, nowhere to take them, there's no governmental organizations. So partnering with Harvest House was an opportunity for us to find a location, to take homeless people, and to resolve the issue in the community, that people didn't want to see a person with drug abuse or mental health issues on their street corners in your community, doesn't look good, plus it's not humane. And secondly, it made it so the deputies didn't continue to get that call every day about a homeless person who's having mental health breakdowns in the community, so we had that relationship, so I don't know what they're gonna do. Now, I think even, look, the last one here Frankie, was the SHIELD program, the SHIELD program was a program that was created by the Sheriff's Office, that the Sheriff's Office has to do evictions, and so they created a program, the civil unit of the Sheriff's Office, it was nice. So that they had an opportunity to give information to citizens who they're going to evict. Now, think about this, if you're a cop, and you're going to tell somebody, they gotta kick, you gotta kick them out of their house, because they can't make the mortgage, can't make the rent, and they got children, what do you, you can't just kick them out, they got kids. So you're trying to do humane things, you have the SHIELD program, and my opponent was like, well, you know, we're not gonna fund that anymore, because that's part of the United Way, we hate United Way now, that's fine, we're gonna look for the sheriff to fund it. Well, this is how he doesn't understand the budget, the sheriff's budget is funded by the Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah, I remember, I would see you go before them.
Yeah, I'm like, wait a minute, dude, what are you talking about? And so you're saying the county's not gonna fund that anymore, because you're not gonna fund 911, or 211 through United Way, because, you know, you want your political talking point that you're about abortion, but you're hurting this other program that helped the Sheriff's Office, but you're gonna ask the sheriff to fund it? That's your money, I don't get it. But then again, you know, so you're gonna kill a program that was actually created by a law enforcement agency that you fund to help the citizens out. There's just the more professional way to go about it.
And some of these are good programs, Legal Aid of Minnesota, it's a pro bono legal service, that's been outed, Operation Warrior Resolution Veteran Services, I don't know why that was cut. The Sarasota Pregnancy Center, United Way, that's another good question, United Way does do a lot of good in the community, and they just said, we're cutting the funding because your stance on abortion, you give some of the funds to abortion services. And the other thing is, other programs that get money from United Way, if, maybe I'm not understanding right, they're getting funding cut because they're tied to United Way, and they don't like that abortion issue, do you want to touch on that?
Well, it's the same thing as the SHIELD program, and we have to remember, the SHIELD program was a collaboration of the Sheriff's Office and the United Way. So, you know, do I think in this case, what was done with this? So, you know, do, do I think, um, in this case, what was done with this was truly an emotional thing that my opponent and two others on the board who run it for office, is that if you look at the Mississippi survey campaign in Manatee County, this is the same thing they did up there. Is that it's, it's a, it's removing something with a need to have an emotional issue to campaign on against Tom Knight because you don't wanna campaign on real issues. So they're gonna talk about abortion and that, well, we removed it so, you know, we won't put up. Why was it in the budget in the first place? Why did you not last September, when you're preparing a fiscal budget? Why did you leave it in the budget back in September? Do the approval of the budget. The budget goes into effect October the 1st. Why are you taking it now? So there are two reasons. One, you have a commissioner running against it, doesn't know how to prepare a budget. That went up over $2 billion, 38%. He doesn't know what's in the budget cuz he doesn't know how to prepare a budget. Or it's a political stunt so that he has an opportunity to talk about abortion cuz he doesn't wanna talk about development in the budget. So it's, it's more about politics, um, than it is really about the services that they say. Do I think every service needs to have a net, net that is helpful to the county government or to citizens? Yeah. Do I think everything should be approved? No. Um, I think they all need to be looked at and the county commissioners are responsible for what's in there. And if there's a benefit for everybody that, that, that could be used. But you have to remember, I'm a constitutional conservative, which means what? A constitutional conservative is something that, that taxpayers, everybody benefits from something. Roadways, public safety, things like that. So if there's a benefit for this community that benefits taxpayer money and a county budget to be used for that purpose, then that needs to be looked at and vetted, not to be used as in a political emotional tool to put in a campaign against Tom Knight to talk about abortion.
It, it is funny with Neil. I, um, I've heard, I went to listen to him speak cuz I went on his website, couldn't see anything that he stood for on there. And, um, there's not a lot of info, so I went to listen to him speak in America First when he was trying to get their, uh, nod of approval. And all he talked about was abortion and immigration. And I, I remember posting on Facebook, aren't we, isn't this a county race? I wanna hear about county issues. Why the hell is he telling me about his stance on abortion and everything? It ju, it just drove me nuts about your opponent. But I have a question, um, it, it's along the line of the budget. And this is something I pushed the city of Venice. They all said I was crazy. Eight months later, they're pushing it and they pushed it through. And it's on property tax. Um, now I see something, I got some data, it said property values increased 14%. Property tax revenue went up 37 million. Military rates. Um, why can't we give people a break? Right now times are very tough out there. We're not gonna say why, although he doesn't have to. Biden obviously is killing us.
Yes.
So what are your thoughts on decreasing the military rate? Is that something you will?
It's way, way past due. And missed opportunity this past year by our Board of County Commissioners, all five of them. They're mad at me cuz I bring this stuff up cuz I was trained in government, I was trained in budgets. Um, I don't know if there's anybody in the county commissions got governmental training that you're looking at them. And I built those budgets and people have to remember my, my first term as sheriff, my first year, my first nine months was during the recession. And I took a budget, um, that I inherited. In the first nine months in office, we did a zero-based budget, peeled some things out and I gave 1.4 million dollars back to the Board of County Commissioners to put in the general fund during the time that they needed all the money they can keep, they could get to keep services. So, um, what happens now with the budget that is prepared, and I was part of that. Um, I sat there and watched it from the county staff is you don't have commissioners who understand budgets, they approve budgets. And so they usually tell the staff what they want and then they leave on vacation for the summer and they come back. And before the end of the fiscal year, they approve a budget. And so this was an opportunity right now with the 14% uh, increase in the property values to, what, what they do is they, 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 they take the property values and apply the essentially the same millage rate. And what they used to always say was, we have the second lowest millage rate in the state. Well, the lowest millage rate in the state is the Florida Keys. And they have such high property values down there cuz they're landlocked and houses are built. And so they just have high because of the value of the homes. Well, we have more rooftops here because the developers have built so many homes. So you have so much more taxable value on the property now than we had 10 years ago that this is an opportunity to build a zero-based budget is building the type of services you want from the bottom and you go to the top and then you know what service levels you want to use and you apply the millage rate to the amount of money you need to provide to the services. And so what they do now, they build from top down. They know how much property values bill first is gonna tell them and then they apply essentially the same millage rate and they get all this extra money. And what you, you're exactly right on the amount of extra money, the windfall money they had come in this year. And so they just took and used it and then during the campaign, you get Tom Knight questioning about it. So they start raking money back to the nonprofits because their messaging now while they're campaigning is that we're gonna have the lowest millage rates in the state next year. So they have a talking point for mailers before the primary. And they don't prepare, the budget won't be going in until September after the primary is done. So what you're gonna get is there's no way that you can sustain this massive budget they've created now by reducing millage rates. There's just no way. They did it and the bulk of that money went to personnel costs. They gave significant huge pay raises within the county government and, and all the county, you know, people under the county system, which is fine, we gotta keep up, right? But the end of the day, you can't have it both ways. You can't create a 38% budget increase and then get questioned about it and then turn around and say, we're gonna lower your millage rate. I'm telling the people here right now, I did it. I was with the Highway Patrol and your sheriff. There's no way. And they, they might tinker them down a little bit so they can say it, that, that, that they lowered the millage rates. But you're gonna hear is, we have our lowest millage rates last three years. We're the second lowest in the state. Well, you know what? Missed opportunity this past year. Just a huge missed opportunity. But when you create that massive budget, you gotta cut services to, to, to reel it back in. And that's why they're scraping money back from nonprofits, using emotional talking points, abortion. It's just a big word play. It's a big political game that they're told to do by their consultants cuz they don't, they're not governing properly. That's what it boils down to.
Um, I see a question on there from Jason Cody, he says, who's keeping the 1,000s of, thousands of MS-13 and other South American gang members from coming to Sarasota? I posted a video the other day, I don't know, maybe a month ago, and it was immigrants being dropped off in Northport via bus. Um, and, and your opponent, Neil Ramper, brings that up a lot of illegals, so why don't we throw it out there? I don't even know, can you do anything as a county commissioner?
That's a great question. I'm gonna tell you, what we're gonna do is, uh, first and foremost is, everything my opponent says is on emotion. He has nothing, he has no idea. I was a sheriff that started deportations out of the county jail. Not, that wasn't being done before I became sheriff. It was a program we had with ICE and that, you know, over my time as sheriff, um, that partnership of ICE worked beautifully. Uh, we were able to deport hundreds, I can't remember the numbers we did, but they were from 32 different nations that we were able to identify people coming through that jail, um, who were here illegally. We were getting them out. I helped the jail population, helped reduce crime, um, part of our Tulsa's policing program. Fast forward now, nothing's been done since I left office. I am going to request and, and, and I talked to some people, the hospital district and the school board. Uh, we need to have a stakeholders group put together. And that stakeholders group will be different persons from different governmental organizations to do research about who's in our community getting services, um, from our public hospitals, who are attending our public schools, of all the things that we are paying for as taxpayers and that people who, um, are here illegally aren't being required to pay taxes on or paying their bills. So I'll give you an example. If you can't afford health insurance and you're a block mason like Tom Knight was at 19 years old and you couldn't afford health insurance, but you have an injury and you have to go to Sarasota Memorial Hospital, you're gonna pay the bill. And if you don't pay the bill, you're gonna go to collections. If you're illegal and you're working construction and you don't know who you are and you go to the hospital, um, you don't pay the bill, nobody cares because you're not legal. So we need to have a stakeholders group to determine who's in our community legal or not illegal. And so some people say to me, well, you know, Tom, you don't, we can't do anything about it, uh, at the local level. You don't have the authority. And it's the same thing that I heard when I started deportations in 2009 about I shouldn't be doing this sheriff and it worked out wonderfully and legally, uh, with no, uh, no civil litigation. But you know what? A stakeholders group and information is power. And I always believed in data to be an advocate and having that data and having that power of advocacy, um, to be able to go to our local legislative leaders or more importantly, our congressional leaders to say, we need more ICE agents here. Or we need something, whatever it is from the federal government, help here and require those elected officials who are responsible for that to give us the resources that we're paying for to be here. But you know, you need data and, and knowledge is power and data is huge when you start to advocate. I can tell you, um, Northport, Venice, Sarasota, when we had homeless outreach teams, it wasn't unusual that they contacted people who were here illegally. But the issue was they weren't arrested and we had no way to bring them to a location for deportations purely because we didn't have the authority to do it. But we know they're there. And so the reason I say that is, we know they're out there. We just need to be able to document it and put it into a stakeholders group and be able to come up with, I guess, a position paper on it and use as advocacy so that we know what's going on in our community. And, uh, Sur 13, when I was sheriff, um, they were coming down out of Manatee County hot and heavy. Um, they were in the, in the North City area, North Newtown area. So, uh, we had a lot of issues with Sur 13, that bothered me, but, um, we did some things to mitigate that, that's a policing issue. Uh, but we, we pushed back on that up in North Sarasota in the middle of night. Things went on in the middle of night that a lot of people didn't know and we had shootings and stuff with them. But, uh, at the end of the day, we need to keep them where they belong, uh, up in northeastern Manatee County.
Um, you know, you touched on homelessness and the immigrants, but let's talk about citizens, veterans, I'm a veteran. Um, what, what are you gonna do about helping them? And I know there's programs, I know there's some veteran programs out there, there's other ones for other homeless. What will you as a county representative try to do?
I, I think in the sheriff's office, we did a great job. Though, you know, my, my father was a tail gunner in a V-29. Um, he was shot down twice at 19 and he did 32 combat missions over the Pacific, over Tokyo. And he, he was part of La May Group and didn't know anything about it till my father died, a whole lot about it. Um, but you know, he was taken out of combat, um, after the second time and he was the only survivor. So I have a, you know, when I retired, my last campaign I ran, I gave a significant portion of my campaign funds to the BFW out here on Venice Avenue where my dad used to, to go and have a beer and, uh, and be around people, like-minded people like him. So I think, you know, in the sheriff's office, when I was there, we started a whole lot of, uh, programs for mental health and substance abuse of people who come into contact with law enforcement and then in jail. And we were able to do a lot with those programs. In fact, we created veterans programs, we had navigators, um, that the, uh, the Gulf Coast Community Foundation created and paid for, not the government. And those navigators were to help the veterans and help these people get back on their feet, get ID cards, find jobs for them and things like that. So I think the partnership with the American Legions, the BFWs, that we could probably identify these individuals who are at risk, I think, um, before they become involved with the justice system, um, who may be having some mental health and substance abuse issues that, well, we can contact, um, as a governmental body and, and do some, you know, do some preemption with them. I think this, I think the public would support that. I think that that's a program that if the government ran it and that we had social people or whatever it may be that were gonna interact with citizens who've served us, I, I think that, again, that would have to be something that I would talk about to wanna put into a budget and did we wanna create a unit for that? And that would be something that the citizens would have to say yes or no to. Would, would they want that?
Now, the next question is, and, and when I ask these questions, guys, the immigrant or the drugs, the county commissioners control the budget, basically approve the budget of the sheriff's office. So the next question is, what would you do in terms of budgetary dollars that go towards the drug epidemic that's hitting our streets? Fentanyl, everything that's out there. Um, I have some addicts in my family. It's not a pretty picture, destroys families, um, it destroys lives, destroys the community. Um, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah. So when I took over, uh, Sarasota County in '09, Sarasota County had the second highest overdose rate to opioids in the state, which shocked everybody, but it was pure of a population issue per capita. So we created programs, uh, created ordinances that are now used statewide to preempt the pain clinic ordinances. But one thing that we didn't know, I was there when, when fentanyl started to arrive, it really shocked us and caught us off guard, is, um, the humanitarian side of me of how many people that I grew up with here and people I knew who relied on me to get them into services. And, uh, I was, uh, you know, I believed in it from a humanitarian that, you know, if we're able to help people and get them into services, you know, we did, we, we put them at first step. We had o, o, opportunities. So again, is that something that, you know, I, I would say this, one of the things that was getting cut is this thing called the court program. So the court program was put together by the Criminal Justice Commission and approved by the state attorney, sheriff's office, uh, public defender, everybody approved it. So it's a program that removes 40 people from the Sarasota County Jail, many of them veterans who have mental health and substance abuse issues and puts them at first step for intense, um, for intense, uh, um, treatment. And then, uh, the navigators, where they get them and get them jobs and get them back on their feet, keeps them out of the justice system and keeps them out of the jail, keeps all the jail population. So there's a net, net there. There's a way to save money by putting money on the front end and getting people back and healthy. So I would say for veterans and the, and the opioids, is that the net, net of having programs, um, that if the community wants those programs to get people healthy, to keep it cheaper than them going through the justice system. I, I'm sitting here, you get, you heard it from me today. This county will be hearing something in the not too distant future about building jail capacity. No doubt about it. It's coming. I can feel it, it's being done quietly. And a lot of these programs that are being cut were programs that kept people out of the justice system and kept people out of the jail. So be prepared to build a hundred plus million dollar jail because they're scraping things back right now to try to cut the budget.
Well, one of the biggest issues with that, I have a good friend from high school, Dennis Weaver, that's a bell bondsmen. He always calls complaining about, is it early release where they let you out with, um, SRC or something like that was the acronym? I don't even know, but he says that the guys always take off.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a BS program because the jails are full and they can't, and they have nowhere to put them.
Yeah, I mean, we did a lot of things for jail population to keep it down. I mean, I was able to keep that jail population down so the people who need to stay in jail would stay in jail. They would, they would get bonded out earlier or, or, uh, or just let out through a jail suite because the jail population's so high. But the issue is, is that, you know, cutting programs, um, cuts the, the things that keep people out of jail and gets them back to work. I mean, I, I, I could bring a guy on this right now that would be in prison right now if we didn't put him through a program. He owns his own glass business now. Um, there's a guy that owns his own cabinetry business now. And I will say this, while I'm wanting to say his name, if he wants to come on one day and talk to you, I can ask him, he's funny as heck. He was arrested 67 times.
Holy.
And so, you know, he, he's, he's a bad guy. And he was bad, man, he can do some pushups if you know what I mean. But, uh, um, but he now is one of the most humble, nicest persons because we were able to get him clean in the jail and then get him out and keep him going through the programs. Now he's married to another drug addict who got clean. He owns his own business. He lives up off the Parker Road area, does very well, uh, has a good cabinetry business. And the other gentleman that I, that we helped, arrested over 40 times, did three stints in three different state prisons. Um, he owns his own glass business. So if you ever wanna get, you know, impact windows put in your house, call me. I'll, I can tell you who to follow, he'll give you a good bid. And, uh, so those are the things that, what's the net, net of the taxpayer? Is it cheaper sometimes to have these programs on the front end and to pay for it on the back end? And we were always able to do a study and show how the money would be spent properly and the money would be a cost savings on the back end.
All right, we got a question from William English. Mr. Knight, could you give your perspective as it relates to the rezoning of the city of Northport and urban sprawl?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, really, I don't understand Nor, the, the city of Northport, so it would be out of line for me to talk about that governmental body. I would, you know, if I get elected, I would, I would certainly be an advocate for the people that live there. Um, I, I haven't really, I don't really understand it to be apologetic to you about that because that's not what I'm studying. I'm studying for what, you know, I would be making votes on. Um, so I wouldn't be making a vote on that down there. And I think urban sprawl is just pretty much what we, we talked about earlier with Frankie, is, um, we're gonna build, people wanna live here. People wanna be part of this beautiful location. Um, but how it was, how it was designed to be done in the violation of the comprehensive plan and the densities and all those things is what's got people angry now. So, you know, there's a way to grow the right way, which was put into place in 2002 by the citizens of this community. Um, and then, you know, when, when you own the politicians, you own the votes, you get your way. And so we talked earlier about, you know, Siesta Key and nobody ever thinks about this, um, when you're, you're, you talk about urban sprawl, is that there are certain places that are the sacred, Siesta Key sacred, that how they want it kept in Siesta Key. Think about this for the people that live down here. If you live in Inglewood or on Minnesota Key and see, and you're like reading the newspapers, boy, Siesta Key lost, they're gonna build out there and they're gonna do what they wanna do out there now with these, these big hotels. You're next. South in the Casey Key, those old hotels. If it happens on Siesta, it can happen anywhere. Cuz those are not laws about Minnesota Key. Um, those aren't laws about Casey Key, those are overlay districts. Those are things that can be, with enough votes, you can penetrate them. And so for the people that live on the south side of Minnesota Key who have an overlay district, my recommendation is you better get your legislative body and make a law or you're susceptible. And what I would like to do is, it doesn't mean that we can't go back to the voters now and go back to the citizens and do another plan and, and grow wisely, grow properly, have fiscal neutrality. You know, there was a thing in the state called concurrency. Concurrentcy was that if people are gonna build, developers build, they're responsible for paying for the infrastructure and absorbing it into the housing costs of the houses that they wanna sell. Well, during a recession, a legislative body removed concurrency to try to inspire, um, the economy and get things moving again. Well, during a recession, the legislative body removed concurrency to try to inspire, um, the economy and, and get things moving again. But it did procure local governments for coming up with their fiscal neutrality or concurrency plan. And that never happened here. And you know why it didn't happen here. So if I get uh, elected and get through this, we can bring our community back together. We can build on the twenty fifty plan that's been violated. Now, we can build on the future. You know, know what you do when you build on the future and you get it, get it again like you did in two thousand two? You put it in a charter. Because a charter is our constitution and a charter can't be violated. And that's where the citizens will have their say to put things like that in a charter. So my, my final thing from my heart, from a place that I grew up and been fifty-one years and never wanna run for public offices. Uh, my final impact would be to win this race, bring balance back. Uh, tried to do something with the budget to reduce the millage rates, just to, to lower the tax burden on everybody. And the final thing would be is, you know, to be inspirational enough and influential enough with my four peers on the board of county commissioners. That we can work with Northport and that are governmental bodies ourselves. With creating the, the proper growth for the future of this community, having it done and approved through Tallahassee. And then putting it into our, um, putting it into our, uh, our constitution, which is our charter. And when I do that, then I'll quit running for office.
Well, um, what about affordable housing?
Oh, wow.
That's something everybody always asks about.
Yeah.
It's um, obviously a concern, especially here in Venice, um, your area. In Walden, if you look even at Walden Chase, those are pretty expensive houses.
Yeah.
So what are your thoughts on affordable housing in the budgetary process of trying to do something there?
So everybody out there is watching me with my notebook. Yeah. I was pretty much a data guy when I was sheriff. So you know, when I wanted to talk to people, you wanna be right about things. And you know, one thing is for certain, we're doing, we're, we're uh, um, I, I'm not in favor of, of subsidized housing. That's who I am as a, as a, as a constitutional conservative is that. Um, but I, I do think we can move the needle on it. And part of the problem is, and I wrote the notes down here so I can keep them all right. Um, uh, there's a, there's a huge problem, a combination, a combination of the people moving here where the bad votes have gotten us into this pickle. So it's, it's kinda, the ship's left the, left the station. We are uh, providing affordable housing to the developers because um, we're not requiring them to build the roads. And do all the things that the taxes are requiring to do. And they're bringing more and more people who, who wanna retire here, who need service workers. And you pool cleaners and house cleaners and things like that, that people can't afford to live here. And this is my data that I have. In September twenty twenty, the county commission voted to amend the comprehensive plan. To remove the requirements for developers to include affordable housing units when they build. Instead, they give them incentives that included increased Dennis density. And I have Herald Tribune stories here. So they remove some of the requirements of the developers by providing them incentives. Come on, incentives and this, that's, it's a, it's wordplay. The biggest thing here locally with this county commission, they ignored the biggest recommendation of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Which everybody gotta remember, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee was a committee of people that the board of county commissioners appointed. They selected them and they ignored the recommendation.
They gave a lot of money. I remember that. I remember that. Yep.
They gave them a lot of money.
Yep.
Um, they chose not to devote any of the money from the certex revenue, the money you was talking about, Frankie. So certex were giving them the money for housing, land purchases from environmental land programs. Um, even though legally they could have done it. And then if you watch and read to me, I get all the newspaper articles here. Um, they bragged about allocating money to affordable housing, but people have to remember that money was through a resilient SRQ. That was not money that was designed by the board of county commissioners or any type of strategy on affordable housing by the board of county commissions. That was federal money. So when, when you hear the county commissioners talk about liberal practices and Bidenomics and all that stuff. Well, they took an earmark from a Democratic uh, president and, from a hurricane. And used it and divvied it out where they wanted to divvy it out, wanna take credit for it, for affordable housing. But that was not their money. That wasn't designed by the board of county commissioners. Wasn't no strategy for it. It was a gift from our Democratic president. Which is fine. I'd take it too and use it, but they just divvied it out. They didn't really have a plan for it. So the main thing I would do, um, prior, prior towards in workforce for affordable housing, not just uh, developer money for incentives. Look at implementing re- recommendation of the affordable housing advisory council, which they ignored their own people. And the most thing that I liked the most was um, from Drayton Saunders, um, from Michael Saunders and company, Michael Saunders' uh, son. He's part of the Chamber of Commerce. They use a percentage of the property tax from new development to fund local affordable housing in a trust fund. So that would come from taxes from a new development, um, in, in the growth of this county and put it in a trust fund. And then find a strategy for affordable housing. But you know, it's, it's a slippery slope when you subsidize housing with governmental money. So I wouldn't be in favor of that. Um, but if you're, if you're gonna segregate money off new development into a trust fund. Then I think, um, having that, like the Chamber of Commerce is in this advisory committee and a group of citizens who agree to it. Then how that money would be used for affordable housing. But that's a long ways out. That takes a while. That's not a quick fix. The biggest thing I worry about is not, not affordable housing is people keeping their houses. And you know, I grew up south Venice, when I'm out talking to people, um, their houses, a lot of them need work done on now because they had the money to fix them up. They can't get windstorm damage, uh, or windstorm insurance. Um, because their roof isn't leaking, but it's sixteen years old and they're told by an insurance agent, we can't give you insurance unless you put a new roof on your house. And they're like, well, I don't have twenty thousand dollars for a new roof. So the people I'm talking to are losing their houses or selling their houses. And trying to find apartments or leaving the area because they can't afford to live here and keep the houses that they're in. So one of the things we need to look at is lowering the tax rates here. Um, like Frankie talked about earlier, the millage rates. Um, and that requires your governmental body to have to work leaner and you work leaner through a zero-based budget.
You know, you, you mentioned that uh, resilient SRQ and it's interesting, Sarasota County School District Transparency Project. Put out something yesterday where they indicated that about five million dollars in hurricane eating block grant money. Is going to a Texas-based company. That's a DEI company. And the question is why, I guess two out of the three contracts so far have been out of state to manage resilient SRQ. And the question is, why aren't we using folks here in the county? Um, I guess the other issue is, why are we using a company that's a DEI type form company? To manage the distribution and that is, so if you wanna touch on that.
Yeah, it's kinda funny because my opponent, he likes to talk about those emotional stuff and Tom's DEI and everything, whatever, you know, uh. But I guess the county government uses DEI program. I guess whatever, you know, whatever. We can go down that slope later as we get into this campaign a little deeper bit. Um, it's emo- it's things, but the most important thing is that when the money is given here, why don't we hire? I remember we went through this, um, with the county minister, Joe Barbetta and Christine Robinson were county commissioners. And I was sheriff and we would always talk about, why are we contracting things out? We have our own staff. Why aren't we managing that ourselves? Or if you need to add staff or pay staff a little extra money to, to do more services. Why are we spending millions of dollars of money that needs to be put out in the public to have people manage millions of dollars that's being provided? To make the citizens better and why, and if you're doing it, why can't you find a local company to contract with? Or hire somebody that's done it before. But listen, we live in Sarasota County. A lot of retired business people here, governmental people, smart people. Hire them and say, hey, you could have a job for two years to manage this. We're gonna pay you a salary and your benefits to manage this. Why are you shipping this money out of our community? And why are you using the organizations you're using to do it? And why is that money being able to stay here to help the citizens of what it was designed to do when it came down out of Washington DC? This is the same thing that was going on two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. People forget history repeats itself. And these are the things that the Joe Barbetta's, the Christine Robinson's used to always call out the county ministers of why, why isn't our staff managing it?
That makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, when I was sheriff, I mean, I mean, I took on new programs and we would manage it in-house. I mean, much smaller than this. Let's, let's be honest. It's a whole different, it's not, not apples to apples. But the reality of the fact is that you wanna keep things under your own roof. So you have access to it and you have access to the person's managing it. It's better to hire somebody to do it and bring them in, knowing that they're on a short leash and they're gonna be in and out in a couple of years, whatever it would take. But shipping all that money out of this community, bad governance.
My daughter's down in the Keys fishing and they just passed a boat of Cuban refugees.
Yeah, that's, that's sad. That's scary.
Yeah. The uh, two-on-one service, um, you mentioned briefly United Way, it was cut. And I, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe someone came in, private, a private person.
Culver House.
Culver House, that's who I thought. He came in, he said, we're gonna fund it. What would you do as county commissioner? Cause I, I get apparently after they said we're cutting the funding for this, the county commission, there was outrage and a lot of people utilize it. What would you do as county commissioner to try to bring this back within the fold, underfunding with the county? Cause he's not gonna be there forever.
No, no, he's not gonna be there forever. Um, I, I think a lot of the programs need to be looked at for the net gain to the community it is. So they, everything needs to be looked at, not on emotion, on what it helps, is helpful to. This was, that was an emotional thing that was done up in Manatee County in the Mississippi, a case they can talk about abortion. So that's one of those things that, one, why was it in the budget? I mean, we talked about it earlier, right? They left, they either left it in the budget. So they could do this for an emotional ploy, um, to not talk about big things, which are more importantly about infrastructure and development. So they don't, that's a distraction tool to pick on Tom Knight. Um, and second thing is, if there's something there, why didn't you know about it? When you put it in the budget, at the budget building process. And then, and maybe there's some services that that two-on-one system does that are helpful. I can tell you, um, you read about it where, you know, homeless outreach programs use it to see if they have somewhere to take homeless people. Or to call the two-on-one line and find out, not, that's not about Planned Parenthood or about abortion. So what services are in there that align with your values as a governmental body, which align with the citizens? And are you able to go to that organization, say, you know, we really wanna keep a partnership and we believe this is good for our citizens. There's a net gain for our citizens out of this, but we don't agree with these two topics. Is there any way we can work? You know, to provide these other services without these, cause these aren't the value of our community. And that isn't done. It's just done through power and manipulation and shock and awe. And it just creates a lot of strife in our community. Um, there's just a better professional way to do it and I've done it before. And uh, i- is there a way to bring those type of services back? I, I don't know. I would have to sit with the CEO of United Way. Um, and see if there's any way to do it, um, in a manner that would be representative of this community and the values of this community. But to just, just to pull it for shock and awe, for politics, that's just a bad way to govern.
Uh, here's a question that's near and dear to me. And Tom came knocking on my door. He didn't realize it was my house. And uh, I live on, in Pine Brook, on Pine Brook Road. The biggest squabble has been who's gonna finance it? They wanna change it from two to four lanes. They wanna put a stoplight at Lukia. Um, what are your thoughts on that whole project?
I would never four lane Pine Brook Road. Part of the problem with Pine Brook Road is the out of control development. I mean, when, when they tore out in the Comas Grove and they increased the density, all that traffic's gonna come down to Envison to Pine Brook. So if you four lane Pine Brook Road, um, you know, there, there's an opportunity for improvements there. So one, um, one thing we have to remember about Chuck Ryder, or not Chuck Ryder, what is it? Wellfield.
Wellfield.
Is that, that's I believe eighty-two acres, if I'm right Frankie, and four, fifty percent of it is preserved. And so is there an opportunity there to do a huge impact of Wellfield and have a professional plan done? And not to make it a huge sports park.
Well, that's the next question, cause the county commission is pushing to make that a huge sports park.
Yeah, I would never agree to that. And you know, is there an opportunity there to make improvements to get the cars that are, are parked on the road? I mean, Lexington Stadium wasn't there when we grew up here. They, you know, it wasn't soccer, but the croquet. So it's kind of the hodgepodge. Well, we have a few acres. It's not preserved. Let's throw a croquet course in. So you know, it does need a master plan and a professional. Um, design now, um, that the, the fields are underwater. They need to be improved. The money's being made available. Would I agree, um, to doing that? Absolutely. Know what else I told some people? From, from a service, those, those dugouts out there, the last two baseball fields, my father, we built that as public service back when they put those fields in. When I, when I grew up here, there was only one, two fields there. Now there's more. I don't know how many there are, but you know, we built those fields. The old training center for the police, you know, that's sitting there empty, you know, we, we worked on that as a public service back in the day. So is there an opportunity there to not make it a huge sports park against the will of the people who live in the Venice Central Coalition? Yeah. I think we gotta listen to them and they have a seat at the table, what, what they want. They don't want a bunch of lights and noise and traffic. But I think there's an opportunity for the master plan to improve that area, to have a professional parking area. Get those cars off of Pine Brook Road when the football games and soccer games are going on, to have an ingress and an egress. Um, that are, that's done more professionally to, to run traffic, uh, down past the old police department, which is now the public works. To get them out of there appropriately without impacting Capri House Boulevard. Um, I think it's huge. Do I think there's an opportunity to make Pine Brook Road better? Yeah. I mean, I see it as Central Venice starting to identify themselves. They don't need to be part of the John Nolan plan. They need to be Central Venice. Um, crosswalks with flashing lights like they have downtown would improve the Pine Brook area, improve, hold the property values on those houses. And um, and, and to have people, I didn't even talk, you know, I mentioned Charles Hines, we're friends. And I mean, is there a way to bring a bike trail through Waterford and all these sub Waterford and Sawgrass? You know, would they all work collaboratively, bring a bike trail to the legacy trail through there? You know, that takes time and effort. But you know, fifty percent of Wellfield is preserved. So you're not gonna build this huge. Um, uh, sports complex like they have down in Inglewood, up off Twelfth Street in Sarasota or Seventeenth Street in Sarasota. That, that's not even capable to have fifty percent of it preserved. And number two, you don't do that cause the citizens don't want it. But there's an opportunity for a master plan. I told some people, I said, I think it'd be cool because um, my vision for it would be, and I'm just me. Is, would be to keep that old police range there. And when the, when the parents come out there for football practice, baseball practice, cheerleading, soccer. You keep them right there on the campus while the kids, you could have, you could have food trucks. You keep that uh, old police range there and renovate it and, and do like they do out here at Sharkies or, or do other places here at the pier. Lease it out to somebody to run it as a restaurant. You have a pub there where people can go get a cheeseburger. And while the kids are practicing, the kids can go there and keep everybody right there on that campus at nighttime. So the vision, and, and then the, the trails that people like to run through, they need to be spuced up a little bit. They need to have some lipstick put on them. So. Um, and the last thing would be, you know, I think it's a big stretch, but it's cer- certainly worth a conversation is, there's really no hurricane shelters in the Central Venice Coalition area.
Well, that's another uh, good question for you.
So think about this, is that, you know, everything sounds good. You know, my, my opponent's gonna say, we're gonna do this, go to that, but he never talks about how you pay for it. Um, so what that cost would be to build a facility on the backside of Wellfield, away from Pine Brook. Away from where the citizens are at and make it like a multi-use facility for whatever you wanna do with it. Um, uh, but it'd be a hurricane shelter, cause there's so many people that live in mobile home parks and live in that area. And listen, we live in an older community. They're not comfortable getting in the car and driving down the Taylor Ranch Elementary.
Well, I think the county commission is, let's bust them. If they can't get in the car, we're gonna bust them and doing everything they can to avoid putting a hurricane facility in Venice.
That always sounds, yeah, that's all, that's all wordplay. Um, you know, I've, I've dealt with hurricanes since, since he, you know, for many years when I was a trooper. We were everywhere with hurricanes, but you know, people are scared and people are elderly. And if, if you could leave lots of mobile home parks, um, around that area, bird bays there. And a lot of these people just, you know, it sounds simple, but drive to Taylor Ranch, but you really, these people, it's hard for them. It's not easy to pack a bag and leave and drive and find a place. They don't use GPS like we do. They don't do the things that twenty-five and fifty-year-old people do. They're in the world that they're in. They're, they're seventy-five to ninety years old. Um, they don't have a lot of family. And that, you know, to build a facility there, um, would be huge for that area. Um, to be able for the, the Central Venice Coalition people to have access to it. And uh, that was one of the things that I would advocate for as part of the renovations of the Wellfield Park area. But I would never, I mean, it may upset some people and other counties, like our traffic sizes, we need to four lane Pine Brook. Hey, listen, uh, they made promises to the people of Jack Doran about Jack Doran and Boulevard forty years ago. That Jack Doran and Boulevard would all, people don't know this. I've been here so long. Uh, Jack Doran and Boulevard used a dead end at the creek right there before the library. I will never run that through the forty-one. We'll look at it now. And so once you acquiesce and give it away, that would just, that just drives more traffic to your area. Um, then you'd be wanting speed bumps. So I think there's an opportunity to keep it two lane, do the improvements, do some crosswalks, do some flashing lights. Bike trails, um, and to make it a pure Venice central area. Now, that's the city of Venice. I can't, but I do know the county controls the roadway. Um, but there's always collaborations on CRAs and things like that. So the vision for me would be to do improvements, not overgrow it. But you know, uh, when you're driving, when you have as much construction going on, you have as much development going on, you're driving that traffic to Pine Brook Road. They're gonna wanna four lane it against the public world, but I, I don't think four lanes answer. Um, and I think when you do it, that you're, you're, there, there's a risk about the value of the housing in Pine Brook and Waterford and Sawgrass. Um, what's that do to the value of the housing when you bring that much traffic right to a neighborhood like that? And I would never, I would never advocate for that.
And just so you guys know, the reason I asked him, those are in the city of Venice, but some roads are controlled by the county and there's joint ventures going on there. The parks are owned by the city, but managed by the county and they're trying to change that. So, um, that's why it's city Venice, but the county comes in there. And that's why you need a good working relationship between the politicians at the city of Venice and the county commission, which usually they have one rep that goes there. Now, I have one more question. What's that?
Somebody's weak.
Oh, yeah, she's replying to Cody, I think. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, warm mineral springs. Um, Warm Mineral Springs, and that'd be, I saw something where your opponent said, uh, we we, this partnership, we need to work it. A lot of people utilize it. Um, they need a lot of work. They need a lot of funding. What are your thoughts on Warm Mineral?
Well, that's that's a good way to try to get the 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 Northport vote um to say he's uh, you know, I'm I'm into preservation and I don't want seeing bad happen. We need to work together. Well, you know, when you've been around a long time like I have been, my opponent needs to go back and look at the county government and the city government tried that. So really, the county government, the way in on Northport and with the will, the citizens of Northport and their governmental body that represents them is really just a political ploy. If you remember, this, the county government and the city government tried to work collaboratively. They were butt heads big time. So you know, if I, if I'm a city in Northport Commissioner, I would say, hey, i- if you want to talk about and use it to get votes, give me some money or get out. So don't be, you know, raising emotional issues about preservation and and trying to use that as a political toy to get vote, tool, to get votes from those of the East European people who use that so much, or the citizens of Northport. The the county in the, in the Northport decided years ago that they couldn't work together for the betterment of Warmwell Springs and come to agreement. So really, as a county commissioner, my 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 message would be, I keep my mouth shut because we tried that as governmental bodies in the past. So don't use it as an emotional talking point now. Um, do I think the citizens of Northport uh are going to request or require something from their government to to improve it without making it a big development? I I think that's what it's going. I I don't really know. I think it would be improper for me to really push in a hard comment on it because I'm sure there's some things going on behind the scenes with the city manager in Northport, in the city government in Northport, you know, I hey, when I was sheriff, I didn't like police chiefs telling me how to run my sheriff's office. And uh so you know, I stayed out, uh, I let them know very clearly, I I run how I run. So I think Warm Mill Springs probably um certainly needs to have improvements. I think that that area down there has been annexed around by Northport. Warm was probably needs to be annexed all the way into Northport for continuity of governance. Um, but you know, emotionally, I would like to see the springs improved because I grew up here and remember from the seventies and the eighties and you know, would I like to see huge development on the property? I mean, I haven't been down there in twenty years at the springs itself. Um, but um, that's really for the citizens of Northport and and the government of Northport to decide how they want to move forward with Warmwell Springs and if they want to try a collaboration with the county government again, it didn't work eight, nine, ten years ago. Um, they can rehash that. But I I think that uh out of respect to the citizens of Northport and their government, that that's going to be up to them.
Now, I don't know if this person posting is just very far on the left or if you actually did say you admire Hitler. So I'll let you, since he put it on there, I'll let you talk. Is there an admiration for Hitler or no?
Where the hell that come?
I don't know where it came from, but.
Please ask Tom why he admires Hitler.
Yeah.
Huh.
He told me you got to admire a guy who can inspire that kind of following. I guess he told James that. Brief. So do you want to touch on that for anyone that's reading it?
Well, I think he, let's be honest, to motivate a nation the way that guy did, but for the wrong purposes, is totally um, wrong. I mean, my dad was in World War Two. And uh what happened in in Europe at that time. And you know, I think that's why we're in some of the wars we're in right now again, is people can inspire a nation to follow them in a manner that's wrong. So uh, you know, I I think people of influence, unfortunately, influence for the wrong reasons. And uh in that case, that was unfortunate and fortunate to have my father, you know, I I like to watch history and learn about history and and follow those things. I just can't imagine being a seventeen-year-old person that's uh, that's in a war like that purely because one person had enough influence to lead a nation into a into war. But uh.
Happens too many times. Um, you know, I've asked my question now. At this point, I'd like to say, anything I missed, you can bring up. Um, talk about your Cool Today event, I think is next week?
Yeah, we're going to have an event at Cool Today Park, a a person who supports me has an Amy writes to it. So it's going to be at Cool Today Park on the nineteenth from five to seven PM. Right now, we're kind of going a little over, we're we're over two hundred fifty people uh have RVP. So um Jamie DiDomenico, who is a fine guy, um good person, uh wants good governance and he's going to have a band there. The band is usually at Pops, um and give everybody a little buffet treats. And uh everybody gets one drink. And um just kind of uh come in, those who want to ask me any questions, who want to meet me, who haven't met me before, it's a good opportunity to come and meet me, but you have to RSVP. Uh, I think he was going to do two hundred, we're already over the two hundred.
I forgot the RSVP.
Yeah, uh, so um, but yeah, we're just, you know, we're we're just, I I like to go out and meet people. Um, I was out on the streets yesterday talking to people out down in the Lakes of Venice or whatever it's called down there, South Venice area. And um so this is just an opportunity for people to um, hear me, uh maybe a quick speech or they're, we're there more to have a good time in in the summertime and get out of the house. Hot, have a beer, a glass of wine or an iced tea. And and at the end of the day, uh if people want to hear what I have to say and they believe in what I'm saying, that they can vote for me or they're going to decide that who best represents them here August twentieth.
Now, if somebody wants a sign, they want to contribute, they want to ask you additional questions. I did put your Facebook and website on there, but do you want?
I got the phone number. Everything's on there. People want to call me, they can call me, they can email me. Um, so at the end of the day, uh, you know, that's, that's where, that's where I'm at with it. You know, I I would tell the final thing that I would say, Frankie, as I know you got to go, people are tired of hearing is uh my political career is in the rearview mirror. Um, twelve years as your elected sheriff was awesome. Uh, I never thought of running for office again. And but I do know, living somewhere for fifty-one years, is that, you know, you can either live with what you're getting um and be angry about it and complain about it and and then go about your way, or you can step in and take your shot. And uh this one is so thi- this is my shot to lead my community just a little bit better. And so there's my political career, my opportunities to move up, to do different things, congressional opportunities, things like that in the heyday. You know, this is Venice, this is home. And uh this is uh uh I have no desire to do anything else other than take one last shot to bring some some balance back to the community my wife and I grew up in. And uh if I lose, I play pickleball. Uh, if I win, I get to be an advocate for balance. And uh that's, that's pretty much it. I'm sixty-one years old. It's a great twelve-year run as sheriff, man. I got all the propaganda on my walls in my office. It was a fun time, but people forget who, what you did quickly, uh but you create your own opportunities, do things good again. And this is mine and my wife, really, mine and my my opportunity to take a final shot uh over these last two months to get through August twentieth. Um, just to do basically what's right, not perfect, um but just to try to do what's right. Pretty simple.
Um, and and just to close it up, Neil, Neil Rainford, if he wants to interview, I'll do it. Who's that? Who's the independent? Sherry?
Sherry Thorne.
Sherry Thorne's reached out to me and I said, yeah, you know, probably after the primaries, you know, see who you're going up against. So we'll do an interview. And then I heard there's a writing. Do you know who it is?
That was in District One.
No, I was told that there's another one for yours.
Oh.
Today, by a reporter. And I'm like, really?
Yeah.
No?
That one surprised me.
We, I have no idea why, but I, it is open. Um, Karen Rose is going to do one. Greg Wood reached out to me for one. And again, I am a Republican, but most liberals or Democrats interview with me will tell you, it's just like this. I don't ask any gotcha questions. So if they want interviews, I go ahead and afford it to them. It's up to them uh to put out whatever they want to. And if you want to believe it, not believe it, it's up to you. And then you may catch your vote. Um, parting words and then we're going to cut it off.
No, I'm good. Thanks, Frankie, for coming up.
All right, everybody, try to share this.
Everybody have a great weekend.
Get the word out there. Have a great weekend and we'll talk to you guys later.